I'd like to call the private planning commission to order. I have seconded, please call roll.
Mayor Valeski.
Here.
Councilman Chambers.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Gardner. Chief Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Carpenter.
Here.
Mrs. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Haden. And Ms. Mullins.
Here.
Okay. We were sent the email, the minutes from February the 18th, and the minutes from March the 11th for a public hearing. I want to make a motion to approve what I hear is there?
May I approve?
Is there say?
Say.
All right. All in favor, two of the right hand. All right, the minutes have been approved. Mr. Scott, is there any committee reports that we need to share with your group?
Those are both committee's. However, like you mentioned, the March 11th meeting was called Public Hearing for Conference Plan, and of course it's under agenda, an agenda to consider for adoption. We received a series of comments via email and even chat on the Zoom. Those have all been submitted. And we can talk about it when we kind of keep to the planning, like Ms. Finnegan kind of updated some of her comments and there, there, and there. And then we kind of went through some of the questions that were posed and presented some answers for those, but we can talk about those at the end.
All right. Excellent. My name is, the C F plan for item number one has been removed or has been withdrawn. Do we need to take any action on that?
No, sir. The applicant sent us the email, said withdraw please. So, you know, was on the bridge, well, it had been actually postponed or continued a couple of times, so, led on agenda, of course, just so you can see what happened to it, it just disappeared, but you don't need to take any action on it.
Okay. Let's go on to the one at Mystic Court, which is two additional court, I agree with apartments. Let's hear from the city on this particular item.
Hello. My name is Tommy Williams. I'm with the planning department. The petitioner is requesting a rezoned property located at 202 next to court. The current zoning is B2 general business, and they have requested rezoned to R4 multifamily. The parcel size is 5.5, 5.54 acres. North and south of the parcel is single family residential. East is B2 general business, and west is R4 multifamily.
Okay.
On March night, 1999, a use of appeal, AKA special exception, was granted for Pine Creek Apartments to be developed. In 1999, applicants, applicants could utilize B2 use on appeal for apartments. In 2018, that option was amended from the B2 category. This side is grandfathered in under the legal nonconforming section. R4 would be the correct distinction for the land use the planning department is recommending approve.
Okay. Before we go any further, is the petitioner here, what should tell us anything about it? What's going on before we do that? How are you doing, sir? What are we doing?
Doing well. I know this is a little outside of the norm for which y'all see me up here for, and I wanted to kind of explain what's going on here. One of my clients has multifamily projects all across Alabama and Georgia, and every 20 years or so, they get into a funding program to rehabilitate the project before it really starts aging and looking bad. I don't know if anybody's ridden out there, but this, this piece of property is well maintained, but you can tell it's 20 years old. It's time to do a rehabilitation on it. So what happened was my client went to get the funding for the, for the rehab project, and the lenders attorney kicked up a red flag and said, "Your zoning's not correct." 2018, when we all, during all the conversations that were had about how to bring multifamily out of B2 and ultimately out of that R3 thing that we did too, or that the city did, this project but lost its zoning and became a legal nonconforming use. So my client goes to do a rehab project, and the attorneys won't, won't clear it to do a rehabilitation because the zoning's not proper. So what I've got before you today is a request to bring this project into compliance. The rehab project is a full rehabilitation, interior and exterior. They put new roofs on it, they, I think this one's pretty much all brick, so they don't do anything with the brick, but they put, they redo the trim, they repay parking lots, fix cracked sidewalks, re-landscape, they pretty much gut every unit, and, you know, make this project essentially new again. So, zero added units or anything like that, no new construction. You know, you might have a new gazebo go in or something like that, but no, no additional units, just trying to clean up the zoning.
And is it a senior living?
It is. This is a senior living project, and, and the way these, these funding sources work, this is a senior living project, it will remain a senior living project and in perpetuity, essentially.
And I have been right there before. At the time, it was about 20 years ago, but it will be here.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Yes, go ahead.
That's what you're saying, is just clean title up, make sure you have your transfer deed, be able to get filings, go on, do what they want to do.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, the public can come on down and ask me any question, I'll find the answer if I don't know what was said. But it is a public hearing, come on down and let's talk. Officer Carter, would you mind reading that in court?
Resolution, zoning request from B2 to R4, Pine Creek Apartments, L C D, the petitioner, March 18th, 2021. Whereas Pine Creek Apartments, L C D, has submitted a request to rezon the property described in attachment A, and whereas the subject property is located inside the city limits at 202 next to court, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezon the property from B2 general business to R4 multifamily, and whereas the public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by private planning commission on March 18th, 2021, now therefore be resolved that the city private planning commission hereby recommends the rezoning of said property from B2 to R4. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion, question, comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
I have done some research, I have been back in the area multiple times, and I think there's a great program that you guys had, look forward to working with your group, maybe on some other projects in the very near future, but because of current events and the fact that the council has more formal apartments, and again, I won't say I'm opposing this, but I would not be supporting it, I would be abstaining from it today.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I would have to follow along being on the city council, I'll have to abstain from this one today, but I am, I hope that it had worked out.
Okay. Do we have enough votes? Is there certain votes that require?
Each team majority, gives us recognition, council.
Okay. Thank you. I'll call a question unless there's any other discussion. All in favor, signify right here, right hand. All opposed, sign, recommendation is that it be approved. Thank you, sir. Attorney General. All right, let's go on to the next item, it's new business, R2 to B2 is 987 East Main Street, that's where Anita Jones is the petitioner, and we, I mean, you tried to put, Mr. Trump, go ahead, tell us more, Mr. Trump.
The applicant is requesting a zoning reclassification from R2, single family. The applicant would like to rezon one parcel located at 987 East Main to B2 general business. Rezoning to B2 does fit the fabric of the surrounding area, and if B2 is too intensive, you can also, we also recommend O1 or B1. O1 is office district, and B1 is local shopping. And as you can see from the zoning map, the B2 is the red section, the O1 is the white section, so it's surrounded by either one, so if you feel like B2 is too intensive, O1 is the option, and B1 is also an option.
Okay, now, B2 would be a little wrong, or the next door is the church office, and then next to it is, what is?
B2 is general commercial business, so you can have gas stations, so it's more, if, you know, it's more open to more, like highway commercial. And so, B01 and B1, B1 is local shopping, you know, O1 is office district, so it would, it can, it can kind of fit better in the, with the general fabric of the neighborhood.
Okay. O1 or B1, and it's an office on one side, what is on the other side? Help me remember. The two places.
It's a, it's a, it looks like a house, but I think it's an office to the left, to my, y'all right, to my left.
To the office.
Okay. And then there's a, a coffee shop, and a drugstore, which is, that would be B2, okay. All right. And then next to it is B2. All right, thank you. The petitioner here, oh, nothing else, those, can you mention Jones?
Yeah.
All right. Your lady.
My name is Larry Jones, 1580 County Road 21 North. The 987 East Main Street is where my mother lives, Juanita Jones. She's 88. My dad passed away about a year and a half ago. She stayed at the house for a year just to see what she wanted to do. She's going to move in with us out in the country, and as such, doesn't need the house. The zoning was, just to be honest, trying to make more money off the sale of the house. So, it's just too much for her, she's too lonely to stay there by herself, so. The B2, I just said B2 because everything around it was B2. Don't know any different, so.
Now, I think it is, one of the, the church office might be O1, or we know that, and so it might.
Yeah, on that side of the road, as you're facing this thing on the right, that's a church office, and lot next to it is a church, and then to the left of hers, they put a chiropractic office in there, Dr. Pickett. So, and then across the street, most of them are lawyers, or developers, or builders, things like that, so. Most everything in that block is probably the O1 category, even though they're zoned B2. I said B2 just to open up more possibilities, but that's probably, doesn't make any difference because anything they put in, you probably won't have to vote on it anyway, so, whatever.
Okay, well, is there, what we're going to do now, is open up for a public hearing and see if anybody has a comment, and we will have a, and if I'm not calling back up here with questions here, say.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, this, this thing getting to call now, and L C D R, and it is a public hearing, public is currently calling out a talk to us, I actually leave the I C A and not talk to the petitioner, I'm here.
Okay, John Lee Finnegan, 211, dear Trace. I'm not against this, the B2, because of everything else that's being business. The only thing is, you know, rumors have gone around that there's going to be like a strip mall or something, so if the house is just going to stay like that, that's fine. But what I'm worried is if you change it to B2, and there is that plan, and I don't know if you have any, you know, power over that, that, you know me and traffic, and I, that is just such a, a bad location, and one of the things I did put in for the comp plan was to get a center lane for Main Street, and it's not a center lane right there. So, my, my concern is as long as it stays the house, but that's a pretty big piece of property, and if it's going to be torn down or whatever, add it into a, yeah, look at the, the amount of it, and they're going to put like a little strip mall or something because they have it right next, you know, like you said, the coffee shop and the drugstore. So that is my only concern, and, and I don't know if you have any power over that, but I would be definitely against it being changed to B2 if that's what's going to happen. And I just wanted to make my concerns voiced.
I understand, and we are, our influence over tearing down or whatever happens, won't we change it?
Yeah, that just, that really frightens me for the amount of traffic that's right there, and it's, and it's just getting worse. And so if it's a strip mall, there'll be a lot more businesses, and that means a lot more traffic turning left and left out of it, and that's, of course, where the accidents happen. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, part of the public hearing? Okay, this is my, I think we read in, oh, yes, there is, Pauls, would you mind reading it? I want to close the public hearing, if I want, if somebody else wants to, Pauls, read it in.
Yes, sir. Resolution, zoning request from R2 to B2, Juanita and Larry Jones, petitioners, March 18th, 2021, whereas Juanita and Larry Jones have submitted a request to rezon the property described in attachment A, and whereas the subject property is located inside the city limits at 987 East Main Street, and whereas petitioner wishes to rezon the property from R2, single family residential to B2 general business, and whereas the public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the planning commission on March 18th, 2021, now therefore be it resolved, the city of private planning commission hereby recommends the rezoning of said property from R2 to B2.
Okay. Good thing.
Thank you.
All right, let's discuss. Yes, ma'am.
I, I'm glad, you know, it's good to see that the neighbors are okay, because I didn't see objection, it's a thing. I'm of the opinion that if we do rezon, I would rather see it O1, because I feel like that fits more with the surrounding, even though there is a drugstore, and it's on the corner, but the other things are more office label, and I think that would fit. Because B2 does open it to everything, and I think we have a lot of B2 available in private.
Yes, sir. I'm just looking at the property size, this is the end, this place is right, I'm wrong, someone said 2.51 acres. It would be extremely hard to put a strip center in on that size of property, because with the set backs, the parking that you have to put in there, it would be almost impossible to put a, some type of a strip center situation. B2 would be fine, but I think you're going to be, it's going to be restricted by what can be actually built there, to be honest, because of the size of the lot, because of layers, so, I'm good with that. O1 would be fine too, but I don't think the restrictions are being, but what you're going to be able to build there, or if you tear it down, build something or somebody buys it, that's going to put restriction on what can go there, just because size of the lot size.
Back to the picture of the house itself, can you put that back up? Mr. Mayor, basically the blue line, is that the right of way? That's where her fence is, isn't it? Or is that bas, basically where the fence is, or where the right way is, or like we were, where you, we kind of took in from the right way?
Plus or minus, the blue line is the property line, so, the driveway that's over Spencer, that's outside of the blue line will be the right of way. There's a small amount right there on Main Street, just between the curb and the blue line, so, probably enough to maybe get a sidewalk, you know, much more.
We had just mentioned, on what John Lee was asking about, or this thing, putting in a turn lane, I don't see much real estate that was, would be available for us in any kind of future unless we, we, you know, line, line people front yard at some point.
Well, I think there, there might be enough little room in there to possibly get what some people have named a suicide lane, you know, a little turning lane, and, because as you see on the south side, and those, those lines are a lot of plus and minuses, so you can't, you can't really go to bank with these, with these lines, and they're, they're close, but that could mean quite a bit one way or another. There is, I think there might be a possibility to, anytime, to get some type of turn lane in there.
And again, I'm, I think that would be a issue for us changing it. Do we have any other discussion on what we would change it to, certainly if they have somebody coming for us? Yes, sir.
One comment, Tim. The real thumb for retail development like this might potentially be is about 10,000 feet per acre by the time we take into service, and parking and so forth, so, this, this could support maybe 5,000 feet, so we're talking about a small building, I think, to follow up with what Monk said, it's a, you know, the concept of a strip mall really isn't, practically would be a redeveloped into maybe more than two shops.
Yeah. And the set line, I don't, I particularly don't have an issue with it being B2, now we can make it O1, and you could always, the person would always, if they have a project, they got something, we would entertain a change from O1 to B2 at the time. If you came to, or the person you sold it to came to us, or something, and we needed to change it, we can change it at that time, we can make it O1, B2, but, you know, if you like us to.
So, do you have any other question? You guys just circle up this side, something like, gas station, would a gas station fit on that block?
Not realistically, I don't think.
Now, with Marvin, you step by, so, if you have to have, and you're resting, and there's nowhere you could put, I don't have to make, I mean, like you said, in front of that, where to put an house.
And then you have, I don't know, how much right of ways of power lines, and varied lines on the front of it, I don't know if you can do, do the tank? Yeah. That'd be a difficult task, for, for, various tanks in front of there.
Okay. All right. I would make you say that'd be. Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, and I think on top of that, you, you see a lot of that screen space there, a lot more asphalt, so I mean, they're going to have retention area for their runoff water, but, and Ms. Carpenter helped me out, I think sometime back, there's some kind of, maybe under an agreement, that Spencer is going to be some kind of borderline for our business area in there, but you know, I guess I am still firmly eager that I need a shovel ready project, when we have something that is, that can potentially impact the neighborhood there, whose neighborhood is, is already been impacted because of a lot of the rezoning, B2 or office zoning on that one, so I would really like to see a, a good game plan, because if this is rezoned, hypothetically, some of these other lots are up and down in there, could also be purchased, and then that's when you can see something that can truly impact this area, and it is a very busy area. So, right now, unless I have, and, and I'm in certain respect, property, I'm going to be able to, to capitalize in any shape, form, and fashion that I can, but I'm just going to impact the longstanding locals in that area, and, so my stance right now is I'm, I'm just not seeing supporting it, unless it's a truly tight shovel ready project, something that we can almost take with that.
All right, you have a discussion? Then I believe we.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
If we were to, in the spirit of kind of compromise on the two, if we amended this to O1, then it would make it impossible for somebody to buy both lots and create a strip mall. It would be fine, in my opinion, as an office space, you know, which was once residential, now office, so, would you be more in support if, if we amended it to O1 so that somebody couldn't buy it, and then turn us, put a strip mall in there per se? Because they would have to come back before, for rezoning to do that, but we would at least give him the business zoning for what it sounds like we're trying to do. Would that be a, a little more palatable for you?
It would be, that would make me out of favor, but.
If, if the, if the petitioner's okay with that, then I'll make a recommendation or amendment to his own for business O1.
Just a question.
Yes, sir. Would you come a lot to the mic if you would? So, there's folks, we're being recorded, and there's people that might be listening on YouTube at some point, so they want to be over here.
Just, just a question, now, why would this property be different from all the rest of them that are zoned red? I'm having a little trouble trying to make that leap, why? If in that whole block, all the way to Memorial Drive, everything is red, why is this one O2, or O1, or whatever it is?
I, I agree with you, I'm not, I'm not against it being B2, I just was wondering if, in order to, by it being a slightly different zoning, it may make some of the commissioners feel more comfortable, so that somebody couldn't come in or would not come in and buy up the whole block and then put something like a strip mall in there, you know, buy up multiple pieces of property, without that shovel ready project coming back before us to see what, what it is they want to do.
So it would be okay for them to buy all the way from Memorial Drive all the way to 987 and put a strip mall, but then they'd have to stop at 987?
Yes, sir. And, and again, I'm not against B2, I'm just trying to strike a little bit of a compromise with some concepts here to.
Me too, I'm just having.
Get what you're wanting to accomplish.
I'm just having trouble from here to here is red, if somebody could buy that, but in a strip center, they'd have to stop here because that was not eligible.
Right. And then the property next to it.
I'm not against B2, like I said, I just thought I'd throw it out.
But the property next to it over here.
Well, it does come back and be rezoned B2, if you sell it, and somebody else wants a tank in, it'll come back, but it's rezoned, I want to be to give the permission with a, a.
Or if you have a shovel ready project, or someone, I haven't had a shovel ready project.
I don't have anything right now, we're just in the talking stages, and me, for my mom, I'm just trying to get the most flexibility I can give her, so, you know, O1's fine if somebody came in and gave a good price, she doesn't care, she just wants the money to move, so.
I think O1 would be more of a thing that could be randomly approved. I'm afraid B2 would be something that you would have to come back with a shovel ready project and, and we would look at, but O1, you know, go ahead, Ms. Carpenter.
And the reason I said O1 would be more palatable to me is because the, the businesses around there, even though they are zoned B2, are being used in an O1 capacity.
True, with except for the corner, yeah.
So, that fits with the use that's currently being used. That's because you could, somebody could buy your lot and the lot next to it and put a fast food or something, and then there's real traffic and the gas station, you know, it conforms with what is being, is being used as, not necessarily what it's.
If, if it goes to, is it B1? O1, if it goes to O1, would somebody be able to come in, knock down the existing house, make it bigger? Does it have to be a single unit, or does it, could it be the two side by side, just?
It would have to, it would have to go through the, the planning process for the city, it can have setbacks, what type of structure, the, the final marshal's office would use it, the building, planning, zoning, all that, you know, is looked at, so if they want to tear it down and come back with something different, it has to go through a process.
Because I thought all along, somebody would probably knock it down because there's so much grass on that lot, it may not be big enough to support, like you said, a gas station, but that's a lot of grass to have to maintain if you're a business, you know, just to use that existing building, so that's why I thought they might make it bigger. I know you got setback rules and that kind of stuff, but.
And you could, you could go with a bigger structure there.
Okay, and still fit in the O1?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you how much bigger, but it can go bigger than that. And again, it depends on occupancy classification, because parking becomes an issue, you know, assembly versus a business office, or storage versus a mercantile, there's different parking requirements.
Okay, whatever.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, my mind.
Just so you, I cannot speak for anybody up here myself, one of the challenges that I see with this going to be too, besides the others you had drawn up, is the fact that you could potentially impact the neighborhood a lot more because of Spencer, and I believe Spencer's in, that side, so that means people could be coming in from there to bring more traffic into the neighborhood, which now, one thing, and I probably don't know about school modern, because I. know about stormwater rezonations, I probably need to know, but I know that when you have a business, and you start taking away some of that green area, you can go into asphalt, you got a retention area. I almost want to say that office is going to be in that same category. So if somebody does want to come in and start doing that, they might have to go through a stormwater procedure, I believe, which will cause a retention pond area or something along that line. But to me, this lot has a lot more potential to impact the neighborhood in a negative way than the immediate lot to its splits, because the lot to the west has to come in from Main Street.
Right.
So that's, that's my thought. Our, one of our roles up here is to help try to protect the neighborhood and integrity, and basically the culture and makeup. And I think there have been some compromises in the past to where to recognize Spencer as some of that design line, even though offices have popped up there. But again, this can be more impacted than some other lots up there, my, my stance.
All right, thank you, sir. We will go forward. All right, is there a motion to approve of O1, Mr. Allen, or the gentleman?
Sorry, I meant a motion to...
I haven't yet, but I went, we threw the idea out there. You're okay with O1?
If I have to go that way, I guess I am.
Well, I, I'm thinking that's going to be the best chance of success in what you're trying to do, to be honest with you. So that's, that's why I suggested that. I mean, I'd make a recommendation or amendment from what, what's proposed as B2 to O1.
The motion is second to change the regulation from B2 to O1. We are now going to vote on the motion. All three persons, five, right hand, for your motion. Okay. Now, on the motion, the entire motion altogether, is there any more discussion on that? Do I need to read it again, Mr. Scott? Or would the correction...
I don't think we're worth resetting the, the motion, just correctly.
Okay. But, but the mayor wishes to speak, and I'll never stop the mayor.
Yes, sir. Well, again, I do appreciate Dallas Johnson coming, compromising here. I did support moving forward with this one. But again, since there is a shovel-ready plan on this one, I will not be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, can Mr. Allen, can you read it in with the, or with the, the, the O1 amendment?
Sure. I'll just make it up as I go.
Yeah, O1. I think you can just say recommend rezoning said property, say, oh, yeah, maybe. But you're saying we might want to read it, the amendment, that we don't know. Oh, we don't know. We just, we just, what's the correct procedure?
I, I would make sure that everyone is aware of what the, the same, the motion on the table is.
All right.
I believe it's to rezone from R2 to O1.
And that's what we are voting on now. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Okay. It appears that it won't go before the city council should recommend the judgment of O1. All right, thank you, sir. Now, the next thing is... Glenbrook. Mr. Rice, all right, go ahead, see, let's go.
I'll start us off here. So, so what's before us today? This is for, basically, Glenbrook 8. Starting with, this is the annexation. An extension of Glenbrook 8. So you see this graph here, it's approximately 6.14 acres, and the proposal is to annex this into the city. It didn't get, so once the developers started working with the land and looking at the plat and options, it turned out they needed this stormwater, this pond right now, for stormwater, and to move forward with their, this next phase. So they're wanting to annex this in currently. Right after this, we'll be rezoning it, assuming it gets annexed, or recommended for annexation. We'll go forward with the rezoning proposal as well. This particular lot, it's just going to be one lot. It's not going to be any kind of resident, any housing on it. It's just for that pond right there that you can see. So...
Thank you. Mr. Rice, if you'd like to ask another, come on down.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. This one, this one's strictly me fixing a mess up by my guys. This should have been included at the, at the first annexation. That, that pond's needed for stormwater management.
And just so we know what we're making, it's going to be, it's a six-acre pond, and we're bringing it in. Do we have to call it R3 or R2?
Question, question. The thing is, if we do go and annex it in the city, who's going to maintain that? Because most city retention ponds, most times are often be maintained by cities. So is Stormwater going to maintain this?
Yes, that process has changed significantly in the last two years. There's now a completely new post-construction stormwater management process the City of Prattville utilizes. We've got to put money into escrow long-term for, in case our HOA was to go bankrupt or something like that. So this, this will be an HOA-maintained facility. It would also be worth noting that I was requesting that the annexation be act, I mean, the zoning be brought, be done as a pre-zoning. So for some reason, you know, we always do the pre-zoning. But then we are requesting R3 is, with this, just to stay in compliance with the rest of the subdivision.
Is there, this is a public hearing. The public is encouraged to come on down and speak to us. Please ask me any question you want, and I'll get the answer. And a public hearing, a public hearing. Mr. Chairman, read in the floor, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas David L. Avant, Diane R. Avant have submitted a request to annex the property as described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B. And whereas the subject property is located outside of the city limits, south of Old Ridge Road West of Glenbrook 8. And whereas the petitioner wishes to annex the approximately 6.14-acre property into the corporate limits of the City of Prattville. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed annexation was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on March 18, 2021. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the annexation of said property into the City of Prattville corporate limits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Any discussion? Any question? All, all what? All questions. All in favor, right hand. All opposed, like sign. It looks like that one's pretty easy, but... All right, we're going to go on to the next one. We back in front. And we have...
This case is the exact same property. Now that it is being recommended for annexation, there is a request to, to rezone, or to zone this property from unincorporated, no zoning, to R3. This is consistent with the rest of Glenbrook there. This section, again, this is really, should have been part of Glenbrook 8, with the annexation and zoning then. But it wasn't. So now they want to pull it in and zone it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. The public can come on down and talk to us. And should there be a doubt in the public hearing, any man ask questions about zone R3? You can come down. Public hearing. Now, we have number five. Mr. Harper, can you read your name for us?
Resolution, zoning request to R3 Glenbrook 8 extension, David L. Avant, Diane R. Avant, petitioner is March 18, 2021. Whereas David L. Avant, Diane R. Avant have submitted a request to rezone the property as described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B. And whereas the subject property is located outside of the city limits, south of Old Ridge Road West of Glenbrook 8. And whereas the petitioner wishes to zone the approximately 6.14-acre property to R3, single-family residential. And whereas a public hearing on proposed zone was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on March 18, 2021. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the zoning of said property to R3, single-family residential, zone.
Right. Thank you. All right, discussion?
Can I know if R3 is back in, do I have to call? I'm standing, I go to that, is that consistent with city? Okay with zoning of R3? I was considering the neighborhood and the plat. Is that, well, city's fine with it, I'm here to...
Yeah, yes, sir. I would have to, to be able to...
The answer is such. All questions. All in favor, right hand. All opposed, like sign. Again, that's two. Who gives what you're asking. All right. Now, we have one more.
All right, so now we get into the fun stuff. So this is the preliminary plat for Glenbrook 8, including the portion that we just discussed, and the remainder of the, I think it's about 64 acres that was already there, that was annexed and zoned several months ago. This is total approximately 69 acres. The, is R3 zoning, and the applicant is proposing to develop, hang on, my notes, 92 lots with this configuration you see here on the screen. Basically, there's, there's multiple street connections. Charleston and Toluoma continue from the south, they continue to go north. And ultimately, it connects to, I think it's Maggie, and a couple other streets that would get it out to, connecting to Glenbrook 7, and ultimately get out to Old Ridge Road. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you've got.
Would be compliant to access Old Ridge by the...
On this particular plat, there are no exits. It does connect in to Glenbrook 7, which has the, the connection to Old Ridge Road. And it has the connections to the south, which is also part of Glenbrook 7. Two connections there, that the road continues to go north.
Is there any question, Mr. Speaker? All right, petitioner, would you like to add anything, sir?
Be happy to answer any questions. This is in concurrence with the current master plan, and we did receive a few staff comments, have looked at them, will not have any issue complying with, you know, any of them. So no issues from our end.
No, they connect to Charleston, and go along the drive. Is that right? There are a long, what are the other connections?
If I can chime in, you can also, from, from this connection on Toluoma Drive, you can actually work your way all the way back to Ferry. So I mean, to connect from a connectivity standpoint, they're absolutely in compliance with the appendix of I have seen.
But right there where we bridge on that area there, or is that where it does not connect?
That's on the other side.
I know, but what, what the blue line, the road is right there, is that on Old Ridge?
If, if I could, if you look at the very top center, right there, Scott, just, you see that road? That is, that right there is Old Ridge, and that is the new connection right there into Old Ridge that was done in Phase 7. You just can't see Phase 7. But all of these connections that we're showing to the east, they connect into Phase 7, which has a single road that runs all the way to Old Ridge.
All right, we have a question. Yes, ma'am.
Since, I know I can't see the whole plan, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we brought this up with other developers recently. Where is the public space, the...
All right. So, you know, as we've, we've talked about a few times, Glenbrook is a, is a, is a pretty special, special place. So we don't, we don't put dedicated, like hardscape amenities in every single phase. What we have here is a big pond, and all of this property to the north of that pond is all open space in perpetuity. We do...
So that is, that will stay?
Yes, ma'am. That's not future development. We do envision the next phase after this is our next phase that is scheduled to get the next hardscape amenity.
That's, that's what I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, this way. Thank you. Well, since you called up about the great wooded area in there, how are citizens supposed to get to it? Or is that going to be all limits to...
No. What we'll, what we'll do is, we've got the pond itself. When you get, you see the road that is stubbing out right there? So that right there is stubbing out directly into the current pond dam. And once the next phase goes, that road, that dam will have to be rebuilt. And you'll have another road that is wrapping all the way across the dam, and connecting eventually, we'll have a third connection out to Old Ridge Road. And when you get that, we're going to have an amenities, like a hardscape amenity site on the other side of the pond. And at that point, you'll have direct access from that hardscape amenity all into this wooded area right there. Yes?
Can you tell me a little bit more about hardscape amenity?
When I say hardscape, Glenbrook has many, many, I mean, miles of, of open area. Some of it is, some of it's used as walking trails, some of it's, some of it's topographically. It's, it's rough property. But it's green space. And so we have a lot of it, but then we also have what we call hardscape amenities. There's two pools in Glenbrook, there's a splash pad and big pavilion. There's another big, open, actual dedicated park with backstop and soccer goals and things like that. And that's really, when I say hardscape amenity, I meant something that's actually developed specifically for recreational purposes.
Yeah, I think, I think what some of the commissioners are wanting is that concept that you have on the other side of Toluoma, where you've got the splash pad and playground, that's probably what they're wanting to see.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying. The next, that, when we cross that dam, that would be Phase 9. And Phase 9 is scheduled to get the next big something on the, on the other side of the pond, to utilize the pond and all of this as additional amenity.
And I don't know, and I don't want to know right now, but I hope y'all are looking at different lot layouts, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Sizes and things.
You know, the, what we've seen with Glenbrook, the, what you've seen in the last two phases have been really all of the higher price point of, of everything that's in Glenbrook. When we, when we originally started Glenbrook, if, for those of you that were on the commission then, there were three different product lines in Glenbrook. One of them, we found out 10 years ago, was not really well-received in Prattville, and we haven't done it since. And that was those rear alley homes that are in Phase 1. But then after that, there were, we, we opened up a different product line. So we kept three going for a while. And really what, over the past few years, what we've seen that Glenbrook really desires is the, the pinnacle of the price point. And that's the reason that you've seen now the ridge at Pratt Farms and McLean Landing on the south side of town, because Glenbrook has become... on the south side of town, because Glenbrook has become a subdivision that really commands just those larger lots and higher price points than anything else.
And I think we've discussed it before, the Ridge at Pratt Farms is a great thing, but it's not enough.
Right. It does not. And like, like I've said before, I'll be the first to admit that.
I just want to make sure we don't do that.
Well, if you, if you've driven by McLean Landing and seen that big monster amenity that's going in at the very front there, that was our solution to that problem.
All right, all right, any other questions for the petitioner? No, we have, I'm sorry, public hearings, we have a hearing, we have a resident? We have a resident yet?
Uh, neither.
Neither, no public hearing?
Yeah.
Just make sure, this is what she's giving in. All right, public hearing, public, come on down here and talk to us, and if anybody has any questions, come on down and I'll give answers. The public hearing is closed. Mr. Daniel, could you read that one for us?
Resolution preliminary plat Glenbrook subdivision plat eight, March eighteenth twenty twenty one, whereas SMB Land LLC is the developer of the property presented as Glenbrook subdivision plat eight, and whereas the proposed development is located south side of Old Ridge Road, west of East Memorial Baptist Church, and whereas a rough sketch plan of Glenbrook subdivision master plan was approved on September nineteenth twenty nineteen, and whereas the public hearing on the proposed preliminary plat is heard on March eighteenth twenty twenty one, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented only on the proposed preliminary plat. Now therefore be resolved, the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Glenbrook subdivision plat eight.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, discussion. Questions? All public questions, all favor, just about right here, right in, all opposed, like sign. Good to go.
Thank you all.
All right. We are moving on along to number seven, which is R four, multifamily to B two on lot A and lot B, the reserve replac of lot A, about the town center, lot two A, located on Old Farm Lane, does the city wish to tell us what to move on?
Yes, sir, this is a piece of property that has been discussed previously, in recent history by the planning commission. I'll give a quick history of the overall properties of the larger property as well as the two out parcels. In two thousand and six, it was rezoned from R to D two. In the summer of nineteen, spring and summer of nineteen, the developer approached the planning commission with plans of a multifamily apartment development. The council, or the commissioner recommended, and the council decided to rezone it from D two to R four, and that was the entire parcel. So now Brian Phillips, the R four. In February eighteen twenty twenty one, the city approached the planning commission about rezoning it back from R four back to B two. That renovation, actual motion failed, but the planning commission, it's still being sent to the council right now, it's not, it's not been sponsored to the council currently, but it's still kind of out there in the holding pack. Today, the owner, BVCV High Point LLC, is requesting to rezone these two out parcels, lot A and lot B, back to B two, general business, general.
Is the petitioner here that wishes to speak?
He is, he's on Zoom, give him a second to.
I was going to let you know, as you will there.
That was Will Barrett.
Uh, Mr. Barrett, tell us who you are, and, well, no problem by name, I'm Mr. Barrett, I never lie down.
I'm Will Barrett, designated agent for BVCV High Point. Like Scott mentioned, this has been brought up before, the owners of the property known as High Point, Town Center, plat two A, lot eight A, A and B, wish to rezone that from R four to B two. That is the long and short of it.
Is there anything shovel ready?
No.
Just here, before we went back to B two, and resumes the whole to some point. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, the public is wanting to come down and speak to us, I would love for you to come down, I would ask that you ask me the question, sir, please, the petitioner wishes to join in at this time too, you'd love him. Again, this is a public hearing, the public, come on down, call. All right, I will close the public hearing, and then this is number seven, since everybody is ready. Zoning request from R four to B two, BVCV High Point LLC petitioner, March eighteenth twenty twenty one, whereas BVCV High Point LLC has submitted the request to rezone the property, as it's right in the town, and whereas the subject property is located inside the city limits at the northeast corner of Old Farm Lane and East Point Boulevard, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the property from R four multifamily to B two, general business, and whereas the public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by Prattville Planning Commission on March eighteenth twenty twenty one, therefore be it resolved, the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends to rezone your subject property from R four to B two, and then seven minutes. Is there a second? Second. Second, that has been written and stated, and now we will have discussion. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barrett.
I've been elected official since two thousand and four, and since then, when I was on the council, I think during that period of time, I think I had a total of about two abstentions, which comes to note. Because of current venture of this property, I will be of saving community as well, so it sounds like I will have two abstentions in one day if you're in place.
Let me take a second, because I've got a real week. I need to jump the cycle. All right. Is there any other discussion on this matter? And I will call a question, everybody ready for that? All favors and the public right here? All opposed, like sign. All right, Mr. Will and petitioner, I believe the recommendation of bill in the city council, as you all requested, uh, it will be on the next agenda, or ready on the next agenda, and then move forward, what's the rule, I think you got?
I'm sorry.
So it's going to be on the next, next month?
Uh, well, the staff said, I'll talk to the council member, or the council members, and find a sponsor, and he'll go on the next vote.
All right, thank you all. So now the next form is Smith Properties, phase two, and this is not a public hearing, hello?
This is a sketch plan, so no, sir, it is not. And this is the last thing on our normal stuff agenda, two other things. So this is a property at the corner, basically, or in the triangle of Highway eighty-two, McQueen Smith Road, and Highway thirty-one. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this property, a sketch plan for it, and it's about thirty-five acres, and they're proposing at the moment to subdivide it into approximately eighty-four single family residential units. It's currently zoned R three, and this plat is carving out basically three out parcels, they're not part of this plat, but, but they are the ones at the corner of eighty-two and McQueen Smith, thirty-one and eighty-two, and then there's one more on the southern side, a little closer, on thirty-one there next to Liberty Gas Station. This, this is really kind of a alteration of a previously approved master plan or sketch plan. Back a couple years ago, an overall sketch plan, I don't know if we have it in the, we don't, an overall sketch plan of all of the McLean property, basically, or what's currently McLean, going all the way up to Center Point Church property, that whole large multi-parcel, many acre property was approved in a sketch plan. This alters that slightly, this was previously approved in that previous sketch plan as residential, similar number of residences, and just a little bit alteration in connections and road layout. But overall, it's not so far different from what was previously approved. And ultimately, this is an extension of McLean Landing, which is across from McQueen Smith Road. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. I know we were looking at, looking at this fact earlier last year, and I still am bringing up the concern that I have, is McQueen Smith, when, don't get quiet, I drove into McQueen Smith Road every day, and the tractor trying to get off of thirty-one on McQueen Smith, is this horrendous, and some days on thirty-one, being on a time of day here, I just look at concern if they don't put some type of traffic light system in, why McQueen Smith is going to be a horrendous amount of traffic is going to really bother McQueen Smith and thirty-one be, to be honest with you.
Sure.
And that's back to our mayor, Mr. Mayor.
And I can't answer that, I don't know if the mayor can, or if Scott knows currently what the status of that is, of course, the city engineer, that's several, but one thing to address that, and this was a staff comment, and they've altered the plan for this, was that connection here that's in the, it's really in the south, the southern side there, connecting to thirty-one, south a little bit of the gas station, and north of, of that rental, equipment rental place. You can see it there, that is a connection to thirty-one.
I'm going to call a poll order on myself, it does need to be ready as a poll, and I'll, since I'm having a very young, sketch plan, Smith property, phase two, March eighteenth twenty twenty one, whereas H C and D Land Company has presented a sketch plan for Smith property phase two for consideration by the planning commission, and whereas proposed development is located inside of Southern Land, Highway eighty-two east and McQueen Smith Road and Highway thirty-one, and whereas the city department has to review and commented on the proposed sketch plan, now therefore be resolved, the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives a favorable review of the submitted sketch plan of Smith property phase two, and move, is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go on, and I'll call the guy.
And I will add one item, the back of the packet, the back of the staff report, is that previously approved sketch plan I was referring to. And this one was from, I believe it's last updated in twenty nineteen.
What is the city's?
It's on the backside of one of the pages. Backside of the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Sir Al Spaliver, sir, I will pay the question, we have a short term toward the key of the high concern with that law of traffic on the Blackwater at McQueen Smith, that that intersects with McQueen Smith, thirty-one is horrible, I know you're going to put one on thirty-one, but there's going to be still a lot of people on McQueen Smith, and it's just, it's just concerning, traffic license, I've been with it every morning.
Okay, is a concern, Mr. Mayor, what's our future on widening, or would he be any concerns about McQueen Smith?
I think it's bright, but again, it has quite a few different variables with it as well, one of it, at the end of the day, office funding, just recently I heard that McQueen Smith Road, McQueen Smith Road, Blackwood is going to be about an eighteen to eighty dollar project, but we do have some thoughts and ideas that, I don't get to cart before the horse, but it involves the community and council action, and also potentially some monies we have received from the federal government, but we have not received thirteen million that I had talked about, I think I had talked about it here, but I know I had it in the city council meeting, I had some others, some sitting here, taking some trips to DC trying to acquire thirteen million dollars, we're still working on that one, but we have some other options as well. I really feel confident in saying that there will be some movement on this in some life of the near future, that's going to be the best sign we're trying to give you today. But since I do have the microphone, if I might, I'm thinking right here, and one little, I don't even know what shape this is, closest to the road, I think it does take attention, spread on it, it's so small, with my old eyes, I really can't read it, but I'd like for somebody to discuss more with me about that, because, we did talk about this plan before, I think the stance of the planning commission, in my opinion, has gotten stiffer, tougher about green spacing. And, you know, we talked before, what is green spacing, but the other question I'm going to add exactly is, how wide are the two streets right here, apart? And, and I'll answer that, if this corner lot is developed, what is, what's the game plan about egress for that lot as well in comparison to this? So you might be able to answer that, but I'll just stay up here, Ken, thank you.
I'll answer the, are you asking about this portion here? It is on commercial, B two commercial, that's the Massachia church, so kind of actually wraps around it. We have been asked about it, and of course, the city engineer is thoroughly involved when it comes to any kind of access questions, and it just depends on the, what may be submitted and the type of use, if it's very low volume, and I won't speak for Robbie, but Mr. Jackson, but he may consider something that on the queen, but I imagine, I imagine he would prefer it to come out on that, that entrance road to the neighborhood.
Yes, and that was going to be my question, if I'm not being on to the city any better than I can, those, that road will be turned over to the city for potential exception for maintenance, so that will be the option, you know, and I'm not seeing a break in that guy, before seeing property where someone like Carl out through deep, and even, and their control, everybody can stop some of that without them taking financial advantage of it, so I just want to make certain that that's, and I don't know if that thing may do a good, but I just, I'm not seeing more opportunity lives there.
Right, I've not seen anybody try to do like a little strip, kind of protect that. I would point out that the proposals are both lined up with the existing McLean Landing structure, but of course, all departments and city engineer in particular, what comes to traffic, he just simply would not, would not allow someone to access at a unsafe. But, but, yes, now that you mention that, we will be certain of mine, we'll make sure that was going to try to carve that out, that would be a subdivision anyway, and I don't think we'd run that.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
If you'll notice, Mayor, that, that master plan is mine, there's a reason that there's not four lots across the street right there, those, those lots are left out because it's good planning, access to that, to that commercial spot, if we had not, if we had just put four more lots on the other side, we would have done the whole area an injustice by forcing a situation where they would have to access directly onto McQueen Smith, that's the reasoning behind not having those lots there, so there's access directly into a public right of way that's not McQueen Smith. So I, I mean, I, I understand the concern, but that was the, that was the thought process behind that at the very beginning. behind that at the very beginning. 82 is, you know, not accessible, that's denied access. If the church wasn't there, I would imagine all the way through the western edge, or the southern edge of the church property, would probably be denied access from, from the, in Pravel Engineer's Office, simply because of, you know, location adjacent to that next intersection. The, the two roadway connections, you were, I think you were asking about the distance between them, I imagine that's for fire code reasoning. If you'll notice, there is a, there's a third connection up there onto, onto 31. The only reason that this sketch plan is before you today is, if I had brought this in in this current configuration, it probably would have not come back, because it's essentially the same sketch plan that was already approved. The reason we brought it in today is because I assumed incorrectly that after rethinking it, the city might, the city might not want that connection to 31. So I actually submitted this without that connection, sat down with Mr. Stevens, and we realized that if we're going to remove that connection, I need to bring this back in to get it redone. Once it was submitted, reviewed by staff, both Chief Johnson's office and the engineering said, no, we, we do want that connection. So we put it back in, so it's here before you today, essentially, in its exact configuration that it was originally. So that, we, we are definitely within fire code now with that connection, no question. So that, that's really the, the impetus behind it. If you would look, if you could count, that master plan is probably too small to see the chart, but I believe originally there was like 95 lots or something like that scheduled for this area. What we've done is we've got bigger lots now, so we've just got less of them. We're using the exact same roadway layout, we just have less lots, so.
One more question.
As far as our planner, that this is still up there, connection onto McQueen Landing, is that still all the same HOA? Do this group have abilities to go to amenities you have over there?
I can't 100% answer that question. I actually noticed. So somehow, lots, I believe, I've got a note written there, apparently lots, I think it says 45 and 46. Anyway, as you turn in next to the adjacent, I mean, next to the commercial property, the first two lots on the right. Scott, if you, can you show, yes, those two lots right there. Those lots were scheduled to actually be in amenity, and I'd like it on the record that that's our purpose for those two lots. Somehow, in us trying to get this turned back around quickly and put that roadway connection back in, if you would look on the one that we originally submitted, that said amenity right there. I don't know how that, and I missed it, and it's, y'all, I'm sorry, we got a lot going on right now, that's on me. But those were scheduled, that's scheduled to be another amenity site right there, and that's the reason that we kind of cut it out, because whatever happens commercially right there at that corner, I didn't want it backing up straight to those lots, so we utilized those two lots as an amenity site. We're, we're toying with the idea of allowing shared amenities across McQueen Smith, but at the same time, it's, we, we need to, we need to study it a little further and see how it would work, because one fear that I have is, you know, 10 o'clock on a Saturday morning, a, a mom and two kids in this subdivision decide, we, if we put a splash pad on this side, a mom and two kids decide they want to go to the pool, and they decide to take a golf cart over there. I'm a little concerned about them crossing McQueen Smith, so we're, we're looking at that. If, if we do, it would have to, there would have to be some serious rules put in place about how that could, how that could happen.
Well, thank you. They also like this, as well, because I feel McQueen Smith Road will eventually get wide.
Right.
And even though, I guess my final question, what about sidewalks right there on McQueen Smith? I know there's, probably some sidewalks, I think, on McQueen Smith Road is widening plan and everything else, but do they already have sidewalks planned?
We, we didn't have any sidewalks planned on McQueen Smith, simply because we're, we knew it was in the widening, in the whole widening plan. So we've, we've been working with engineering now for two years, making sure that these developments comply with what the construction drawings show for the widening. I mean, we'd be happy to put them, put a sidewalk there, you know, if it's needed. I'd, I'd kind of like to keep people off of McQueen Smith as long as possible, you know, pedestrian-wise, but if, if the city desired, we could certainly parallel McQueen Smith with a sidewalk. I mean, wouldn't really, it's not a big deal.
Okay. Would you be open to us approving this with the, putting the two lot traffic management to be lots?
I would prefer that you did. I was going to make that request.
All right. I want to make a motion that that be added to the amendment.
I move that we do the two lots carved out next to the commercial site as amenity lots.
Is there a second on that?
Sure.
All right, now we are voting on the amendment to the proposal to the sketch plan.
With the understanding, if, if you don't mind, that remember, this is a sketch plan.
Absolutely.
So stuff will move and, you know, but it is, it is 100% our intention.
There will be an amenity.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? Make your hand on it. Okay. But yeah, it is part of the sketch plan now.
Thank you.
And now I would just, is there any more questions for him for the sketch plan? Now we can come back in more detail in the future, if this is a sketch plan. Any more questions? Then I will call a question on the amended sketch plan, which includes the two lots that are now amenity lots, all in favor of the resolution, if you can provide it to me. All opposed, or signed? Okay.
Thank you.
So we got, now, we are getting to the last two things, and if I can, we're going to go, are you good? All right. We have a bucket here on the proposed ordinance amendments R4.
Yes, sir. Give me just a moment to get everything hooked up. So beginning our second hour. The commission may be aware that in December of 2020, the city council passed a moratorium, rather, on multifamily developments, basically saying that no new apartments, with the purpose of updating the comprehensive plan, which is, is on your agenda for next, as well as updating the zoning ordinance. So last month's meeting, there, there was some talk about making some small incremental amendments to the R4 zoning. The recommendation was just to push on that. We've, we've met with the consultant a number of times, Mr. Jason Fodden here, and, and now we're presenting an entirely new rewrite of the R4, of the multifamily zoning requirement. So let me swap over, in a second. Well, let's see. So in, in your packet is, is the proposed text amendment. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fodden here, so, and he can go through examples and a further explanation and exploration of the proposed multifamily zoning.
Thank you, Scott. So in updating the zoning ordinance, one of, one of the issues that, as we moved through the planning process and began working on the zoning ordinance, one of the big issues, of course, was, was residential development, particularly multifamily. So we began putting together some recommendations for staff to take a look at, and then we have shared that with a, a little bit larger group. So what we, what we have done is we have prepared an amendment that would go into Section 67 zoning ordinance, which is currently titled Multifamily Housing Projects. And so that establishes some of the requirements that are connected to the R4 zoning. So if you wanted to do any multifamily in the R4, you'd have to abide by Section 67. So the, I'll give you a summary today of what we have put together, drafted. There's a set of site development standards that deal with how buildings, parking areas, open spaces arranged on the site, requirements for open space, how stormwater is dealt with, waste collection, providing storage space for tenants, and of course, fire protection. Quickly about arrangement and orientation, this is, deals with how buildings are arranged on the site. It would, the recommendations would require that buildings are oriented either towards streets, towards interior drives, or towards open spaces, not to be oriented towards adjacent properties, and not to solely be oriented towards parking. So it has to, they have to be aligned with something other than parking or adjacent properties to meet that requirement. Buildings cannot be surrounded completely by parking areas, and very rigid barracks-style arrangements of buildings would be prohibited, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So you can see in this, this site plan of a, a multi-building complex, several of the buildings wouldn't meet the, some of these site requirements, such as you'll see the, the building on the lower right is completely surrounded by parking, so is the, the building immediately north of that, and then on the left side of the screen, you'll see another building that's surrounded by parking and is oriented more towards the adjacent property and towards parking, and it is not really associated with any open space or anything like that. Another example, you know, so another site plan of a multi, multi-building complex, you see the four buildings on the left, although they are, they do have parking around them, they are oriented around a common open area, so that would meet this, these, these requirements. However, you see the building on the left-hand side with the arrow pointing to it, is surrounded by parking, and so it would not meet that requirement. In existing multifamily development in a city in Alabama here, this would be very representative of that sort of rigid, rectilinear barracks-style development, where all the buildings are more or less the same, they have the same amount of open space and orientation towards parking and streets. So this would really be discouraged, and really, the, the layout of the, the property and the site, the environmental conditions, the topography, all of that should be carefully considered when laying out any of those developments. The building spacing, so the required space between buildings, whether that is going to be parking, or driveways, or common area, is based on the size of the building. So when you have two buildings side by side, if they are oriented, they're long sides to one, toward one another, you add up the length of both of those buildings, and divide that by three, and that's the minimum spacing requirement. And so when you have two short sides of buildings, they're, you know, the ends of two multifamily buildings, side by side, you're going to end up usually with a total requirement of about 20 feet, or maybe a little bit more than 20 feet. But if you start laying them longways side to side, the spacing starts to get more based on the length of those buildings, so that you have decent, well-proportioned spaces between the buildings. Parking requirements are going to include not allowing parking between the street and the building, and that if parking is located to the sides of buildings, that not more than 30% of the street frontage of that complex can be devoted to parking. So you, you're going to have yard and building as the predominant form on the street, not parking, to keep more of that residential character and not the sort of commercial characters. Particularly is important when you have any R4 or multifamily development that's going to be anywhere adjacent to single-family areas. It helps to have them integrated a little bit better, to not have parking up in front. So here's an example of, you know, multifamily complex that has all of their parking in front. There may be some conditions, topography or other unique characteristics, that would make it more conducive to have parking in front, and so we do, we did carve out an exception that the, that staff can approve for exceptional circumstances to allow parking in front of those buildings, particularly if they're located in a predominantly commercial area where parking is located in front, such as this parking complex is on a major road, and most of the development around it has parking in front, so it would be appropriate in those circumstances. Open space, a new requirement there, 20% of the overall site has to be devoted to open space, half of that requirement has to be improved open space, so 10% of the site could be natural open area, and then the other 10% would have to be improved. And for developments larger than 40 units, unless they are age-restricted, such as senior housing, they would be required to put in some type of improved children's play area, and that, so that begins again at 40 units and above. And the way that the open space requirements are set out, there is an incentive to put porches and decks and other types of sort of semi-private space attached to buildings that create that transition from the building to the common area. So there's a, there's the private interior space of the building, there's a semi-private space on the outside of the porch, and then the more public communal space beyond that. So something, you know, this would be an acceptable open space, they can have pools, gazebos, lawn area, pickleball courts, what, what have you, whatever is the, the amenity that is, you know, appropriate to the market at the time, will fit that category so long as it is technically improved according to the, the standards. And here's just an example of a multifamily development that has a lot of porch spaces. These don't even look like multifamily buildings because of the design. They look more like townhouses or just single-family homes, the way that they have the porches on them, they have a nice separation. There's, there's a sense of privacy and transition from the common area on the left, on the right-hand side of the screen, to the buildings with those, those porches and that, that vertical separation as well. Stormwater management, it, the recommendation is to require that stormwater design is incorporated into the parking lots, rather than all of it being handled in, in a retention area. There, there would be an allowance in exceptional circumstances, so there's, it's to the degree practical to incorporate stormwater design into parking areas, and if there are stormwater facilities such as a retention pond included in a design, it can only be counted towards the required improved open space if it is designed so that it can be used as an amenity by the resident. So if it's, if it's just a strictly minimal engineered retention pond with chain-link fence around it, it's, can't be counted towards the required open space. Here, yes, sir?
Would you go back, I think, two slides? One more. Okay, one more. Okay, right there.
Okay.
How about some clarity? About 20% of the sidewalks be open space. I've been on the road, somebody come out and say, okay, I'll use some of my part lot for that.
Parking can't be included in the, in the open space.
We have to put that in there.
Right. So there, there's, yes, what can, what can be, what meets the, the open space requirement is, is defined.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's in there.
Right. Driveways and parking areas can't be included.
Now, the other word on the bottom here, it's, sometimes it's political.
Right. So the incentive is that up to 25% of the improved open space requirement can be satisfied by porches and decks if they meet, if they're at least 35 square feet in area, and they project out from the building face. So these, these porches would count towards up to 25% of the, of the improved open space. So it incentivizes that. Does it require it? You're not, you know, you're, there's no, the incentive is that it allows them to be counted towards one of the other requirements.
Well, if I can put on my political hat.
Sure.
And the word "incentivize" can be used quite broadly? Is there another word?
The term, that term is not used in the requirements, in, in, in the, the draft.
Okay.
I'm just describing it as, the way that the requirements are drafted, they...
Okay, I just want to develop to come to the city.
They, right, right. There's no, there's no money changing hands or anything like that. No, it's, it's just, it's a bonus in that if they put those in there, they can count those towards part of, part of the open space requirement.
May I ask you a question as well?
Sure.
The open space, is it just open space, or is there any requirements regarding what you put in it? I know you said something about pool, but...
Yeah, the, the, the standards list examples of things that can be counted as the improved open space. The basic standard is that they have to be, at a minimum, sodded and made, and designed for the use of residents, and it includes the different, different examples of things that, that can go in it, but doesn't require specific things to go in. You don't have to do a gazebo.
So is that considered free space? They don't have to put anything out there for the kids, or anything like that?
If, if it, if there are 40 units and above, then they do have to put in, in a, a children's play area, in which would include some type of, you know, equipment, or some, some design, some children's, something designed specifically for the use, recreational use for children.
Okay, well, is that, when you say that, I can say, like, what about the kids, they're, say, 12, 14-year-olds that are wanting to use playground? Do you have anything specific for that?
Uh, no, we don't have anything specifically written into the regulations about that.
Okay, thanks.
But once you get to teenage years, you design things for them, and they intentionally stay away from it.
Back on, just that proof of space, that you can pick a ball, or throw a baseball at each other, that type of space would be good.
You might be looking for a definition of open space.
It's in there.
Right.
It's in there. Okay, so, so back on the, the stormwater, so it encourages incorporating, this is not a great picture, but using swales and other, and vegetation to, within parking areas, so that stormwater drains into it, and it allows it to be absorbed, and planting does, we don't specifically require this, but certain types of plants will help to cleanse the stormwater, so it improves your water quality. We're trying to get away from what you see on the right-hand side, which is the, you know, minimally-designed retention pond that is typically going to be fenced, and have something that's more like what you see on the left-hand side, where it's, at, at a minimum, it's a visual amenity, but that if it's designed appropriately, then it can also be really used by the resident, having, you know, a trail around it, seating, who knows what, you might have a, a pavilion adjacent to it. So encouraging that, not requiring it, but encouraging that, because this, you know, we're incentivizing, let's say, if you put this in, it counts towards your open space requirement, if you put this in, it does not.
Yeah.
Maybe encouraging is a better...
I just want to, one more.
So in terms of waste collection, yes?
We talked about parking earlier, I did have a question about that. I'm sorry, it's written here, but...
That's okay.
Two, okay. Is there a minimum, okay, we've got 1.5 spaces per one bedroom, yeah? Is that pretty standard, I mean, if you have two people in that one-bedroom apartment?
It is, because you'll, you'll have a mix of some one-bedroom apartments, you'll have one person living there, and then you'll have some that have two people living there, and so it averages out. When you also, but then you, you also take into account that the, the larger bedroom, or the units with more bedrooms are going to require more parking spaces, two and three for, for your two and three, two parking spaces for two and three bedroom units, three parking spaces for anything above that. So you do, that is very, very consistent with what a lot of cities require, maybe actually a little bit on the higher end, and we do, also do have a visitor parking requirement, which is not, obviously is not going to be used 100% like the resident parking is, so that can act as a, a little bit of a flex for the parking.
Since we're interrupting your presentation, but if there is something in here that the planning permission would like to be different, is, we can make a motion and discussion and check, because we have to thought on parking as well.
Absolutely. Okay. Absolutely. This, this is your show. So waste collection, and service and loading areas, the key's there, you know, the, the site has to be designed so that, that those common facilities that residents use are placed in convenient locations for the residents, but they're also easily accessible by the vehicles that are need to service them, and that waste collection areas are going to need to be screened. What you see on the left-hand side is not going to be adequate, what you see on the right-hand side is, is a good bit better, having a full enclosure around it, and that those have to be closed when they're not in use. We also incorporate some pedestrian standards into the draft, so that interior walkways are going to be connected to the street, they're going to be connected to any adjacent trails or pathways in the neighborhood, any bike-pet facilities that might be built by the city, for example, in the future. Walkways within the site have to be separated from any vehicular area, so you can't just include your driveway and say, that's, that's my walkway. But there are cases where through the use of different materials, curbing, bollards, other types of, or changes in material, you can include walkways alongside, or kind of immediately adjacent to your driveways, and there also is an exception for smaller parking areas, that those, you don't have to put walkways adjacent to them if they're designed as shared spaces, as you'll see in the bottom right, that image with the, the paved parking area, you would not have to put sidewalks adjacent to that. It would just be, I think the, the maximum is 16 parking spaces, so that there's very little traffic going in and out of that part of the complex, and it would be, and because of the textured driving surface, cars are going to drive slower through there, so that can, that's sort of an exception. The image on the left-hand side, where the walkway is basically something that's just painted, striped on, would not meet the requirement. You'd have to do something more like what you see on the top right, where there's a change in material, or a change in elevation, you know, the raised walkway. And we also have recommended some standards to improve privacy and security, such as the location and screening of stairs, if they are not internal stairs, then they need to be away from street view. That also helps to keep it from looking more, helps it to look more compatible with any adjacent residential, rather than looking, you know, 100% like a typical apartment complex. And windows and entrances to ground-floor areas need some separation from driveways, parking, and, and walkways. So you'll see in this, this building, this apartment building, the ground-floor units have virtually no separation whatsoever from the parking area. The, the windows are right at eye level with cars, people coming, getting, getting in and out of their cars, there's no landscaping or anything, not much space between them, and also, of course, you can see those stairs quite easily. And then these two examples, the, although the, the picture on the top left is not an apartment complex, one of the ways that the requirements allow you to achieve those privacy and security standards is by, if the buildings are raised above the sidewalk or parking area level, then it achieves a, a, a good bit of visual privacy for those ground-floor units in the sense of separation. And then on the bottom, bottom right, you'll see incorporating landscaping and having a setback between any walkways, and the ground-floor units will help achieve that standard. Lighting standards, like walkway areas have to be lighted, there cannot be any spillover onto adjacent properties, so any, any lighting fix, lighting fixtures, whether they're building-mounted, or they're freestanding, have to be shielded, no, no lights taller than 20 feet. Architectural standards, and all of these are really geared towards making multi-family development visually more compatible with single-family development, particularly when, when they are next door to one another. So requiring more foresighted design, which means, you know, all, all sides of the building have to be of an equivalent design, the buildings have to be articulated well, not just plain boxes, I'll explain that in a second, the complexes have to have more than one building type, so more than one floor plan, and just reversing a floor plan does not meet the requirement, and that roof lines also have, like the buildings, those have to be articulated as well. So here are two examples of buildings that, multi-family buildings that would not meet these requirements. You have buildings that have no variation along the, along the, the building walls, they're flat, there are no recesses, there are no changes in materials or colors, so they're very, very minimalistic, and they're not going to fit well in a residential environment compared to these buildings, which have a lot of variation in terms of, so we have building articulation, we have recesses and projections along the, along the elevation, along the facade, porches and balconies are sticking out, and, and there are recesses for those, for some of those balcony areas, you have changes in material, you have changes in color. And then the building, the roof articulation, so here are some examples of, of buildings that, although they have some variation in the roofs, the predominant roof feature that you'll see is that long, flat ridge line. The requirements are going to require that that ridge line be broken up, that, and you can do that a number of ways, that's incorporating gables and dormers can help to do that, but the ridge line, there's a maximum length at which point they have to vary that roof line. And in terms of details and materials, there's a requirement, there'd be a coordinated color scheme, doesn't say what that color scheme has to be, that certain bright, the, the word is escaping me, not neon, but, you know, so very, very bright, gaudy colors cannot be used, that, that, although earth tones are not required, they're, they are recommended in, in the, in the standards. Buildings, when they are facing the street, have to have at least 15% of their, that elevation has to have some fenestration, which meaning windows and doors, and that on other facades, it's at least 10%. So if you're not facing the street, then the requirement is a little bit less. Windows have to be, have to have some depth to them, so you can't just have, it can't just be very, very flush, and permitted materials include, there, there's more to it than this, but generally masonry, so decorative concrete block, not plain concrete block, stucco, wood, wood siding, all those are permitted. There are some materials that are restricted in terms of how much of the facades can be you, can, can be, how much of, how much of facades can be these materials, such as vinyl and metal siding, and mirrored intended glass, some of the prohibitive materials for use on, on the sites, chain-link fencing, plywood cannot be used on building facades, sheet metal and fiberglass. So here, you know, a, a, an example of building, oh, and I didn't mention this, but one of the requirements is that there must be more than one exterior building material, so you have to incorporate something more, that you can't just do, just all brick, and you can't do just all wood, so there needs to be some inclusion of multiple materials, and typically, you're going to use heavier materials, such as brick on the bottom, and lighter materials on the top. So here are two examples, so we've got a, an older apartment complex on the, on the bottom right that uses vinyl siding, this uses more vinyl siding than would be allowed on a street-facing facade in, in these requirements. I think we put in scods at 30%, so this is probably over 50%, so they could, they would have to scale back the amount of vinyl that's used compared to an image like this. And then on the, the top left, we've seen a lot in, in, in a lot of newer multi-family development incorporation of different types of metal cladding, it's almost always corrugated, which gives it kind of that same appearance from a distance as you get with vinyl or wood siding, you get, you get some, some texture to it, it's very popular, and has been for, for a few years, so we do allow that to be used in the standards, but it is limited, you can't do an entire building, it's limited to 30% like vinyl siding. There's some landscape standards, requiring landscaping around any exposed building foundations on the, on street facades, encouraged to preserve existing vegetation, extent practical using drought-tolerant plants, and low-impact design in parking lots, as I mentioned before. You're required in your landscaping to use a mix of evergreen and deciduous plants. Evergreen plants are important to, because they provide the landscaping, the purpose, some of the purposes of landscaping, such as screening, or that visual separation, if they're deciduous, then in the wintertime, you get nothing out of them, virtually. Trees along street frontages, and irrigation depending on the landscape design, irrigation system may be required, so here's just an example of having that landscaping along the foundation. If those are deciduous plants, then, you know, in the winter, you'll be able to see that, that foundation, which is not what you're wanting to do. Some of the additional stand, or two other additional standards that are included in there is that for any developments of over 100 units would require a traffic study automatically, and the city engineer may require in certain locations where there, for example, there are some known traffic issues, that they could require a traffic study, even for a development that's under 100 units, and then a stormwater man, a stormwater management drainage plan would need to be included in the site plan that's provided to the city. I think that, that's it?
Thank you, sir. We'll take a quick five-minute recess, or until 5:56, or 4:56, I thought we had a quick recess, and a little brief write-back from Dr. Soto's past, anything you got, and John Mulligan, we, we may sit here an hour and a half, or two hours, we have a break.
I understand you took the 35 feet out?
Sir?
We take the 35 foot max out.
I, I let that out, that'd be part of the discussion, we, we just went to...
Okay, well, I saw that, that's why I'm... Basically, I thought your three-story walk was just going to be your max, but not even to say somebody who won the mid-rise.
That's what we, just if you had to, you'd have to be two or five.
Is there some...
I know, I know.
And you have a building that is so many feet off of the road, that you also have to...
Conference One, but you have to have six of them.
I was wondering, how apparatus, you have two apparatus, they have to do...
It's a long journey.
Apartments are protected by automatic drainage systems. They're needed by the department.
Don't have a presentation anyways.
So that's where the site plan comes in. Very careful. That, I believe somebody, either the mayor's or the president's member, told us to ask that.
Two-story, right?
But that, that would be a year, that's a separate, I'm pretty sure.
I don't believe so.
There are certainly pros and cons to that.
No. Well, it's a college town, so you have, numerous mid-rises. I don't think it was addressed specifically.
Then when you get in the land, you also have to look at how you're going to, so that can be a lot more critical. That can, that can cause this to be addressed either as more restrictive or a deep game from.
Anybody want water? Bottle of water?
John, you know, you had that slide where you're doing some surveying early on, getting up deals, getting up plans. I might check with you to see if you'd be able to pull that up tonight.
Like that was in the conference point presentation?
Yes.
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
I've got a question on that one. In the parking, motorhomes and roads?
Yeah.
Because I know it's in there, but how do we enforce that?
Other than just code enforcement saying, don't put it out here, I mean, that's a good question.
I mean, I'm having, on one hand, this is private property, and, you know, I mean, once it gets built, you know, it says in there they gotta have, and I'll be as honest as well, too, we already got current apartments, so it comes with this vegetation stuff. I guess they do grandfather it in. Some of the vegetation in there, it's good in the beginning, but I don't see how we the city go.
Yeah, that's how a lot of things are, it's just, yeah.
But then when we bring it up about four feet to, to.
I think that's what he said. Yeah, I'm assuming that's right. That's how it presents.
All right, that's all, thank you for understanding of a quick break. And this is going to be a public hearing. The public has come on down to speak. Where you want us to go first? Come on down and let me see if I got my hands or let them write down any questions. Go right ahead.
Okay, John Lincoln again, 211 Dear Trace. A little background information, if I may. When NVAH was making, you know, presented the plans for their apartments, I was totally against it because of the number of units and the traffic situation. And so when BV CV came before you and they presented their plans, and I saw their apartment plans, and it was only going to be like 180, so I wasn't too upset about that. And then, of course, it was then changing from the whole R4 to B2 and that you guys quit that or you guys voted against it. And now, you know, it came back that then they were going to change R4 from three stories down to two stories. So now we have this, and I, I don't know about you, but I looked through this several times, and, and as I told somebody, I said, my eyes crossed reading it. I just went, oh my God, where did, where did all this come from? And I almost, you know, the ideas are, are, you know, this and this and this, but has there ever been any development, in fact, is there any in Montgomery or wherever, that all of this has been incorporated? And all I can see is the vast cost. And you guys, I'm not against multifamily, and the comp plan says, you know, that we need multifamily. My big thing is, put it in areas where the congestion won't be, where the traffic's not going to be. You know what I'm saying, like out by the industrial park, areas like that. So have the multifamily. But this to me just seems so, not only labor-intensive, but cost-wise, that I wonder if anybody would be able to come in and even do a development, you know, because of the cost. And I don't know why we're getting so nitty-gritty. I mean, this to me is like some, you know, and I, I hate to use the word la vida, but this would be like someplace that, you know, in Atlanta maybe, or something like that. But for here in Prattville, and if we're going to have the multifamily, and for a developer to build something like this, incorporating all these, I, you know, it's not going to, and then it, it's not going to serve its purpose because people aren't going to be able to afford to live there. And, and my only thing is, why have we gone to such a degree when it was just going to change from three stories down to two stories, and now we have all of this? Yes, it's lovely, but I just can't see that happening here because of, of, you know, the, the populace and stuff like that. So anyway, I'm just very surprised that this has gotten so much detail and why we have to do, and if we're saying this and this and this, that means, you know, the whole development has to incorporate all these. And I don't know if this gentleman can answer that, and I know he said, talk to you, Tim, but it said, where is, where has all these types of, of details, where are the developments that have every one of these details incorporated? I just, you know, he gave examples of you can't do this, and here's one of this using this, but it didn't say about the lighting, and it didn't say about the parking, and it didn't say about this. And I'm just, I'm completely flabbergasted.
It's the direction that we're, I, I, I don't believe in multifamily dwellings and it's always a need and purpose to do, and that, and that they need to be incorporated. I don't like the looks of the old.
Oh, no, I don't either. I don't either at all.
We really have, and, and again, I don't want to go back, I was just down in Daphne and Fairhope and that whole area, and they started a program where they didn't allow a lot of things, and, and we're about 20 years behind on that, and we've got to start, in my opinion, we have to start somewhere. And this is a good example of what we can do, because they have, hey, we're going to have multifamily, but we're going to have a certain set. Now, if we're going to go to this extreme, that's something that we might need to look at, but we got a lot of work for what we will, what we will.
Oh, it looks lovely, but I, I just don't think that, that the, the per capita can afford that. Like you talked, Fairhope and Daphne, I mean, come on, you know, we know about Fairhope and Daphne, and, and that's why I was saying about Atlanta and things, but for the, the per capita income of people and, and things, I just, you know, I, I just think this is going to knock them out of, you know, knock them out of the water. It's not going to happen. And that's, that's the only thing, it just, I, I'm just floored where, you know, it started so simple, and then all of a sudden, now it's just, you know, it's just blossomed. So that, that's my only.
If I might, you know, I think a couple of things that sort of is driving this a lot of the 2040 plan, but this were, I think, one of them is my, my process, the apartments that are on Sixth Street.
That are on what, honey?
On, on Sixth Street, when you turn off at 31, take a, turn on the Sixth Street from 31, see what he's.
I'm thinking. The what is it?
Well, not that one.
Oh, that, the one that burned?
Not that one, the one right across.
Yeah, but how old is that?
Across the street. Part of ways, but, now, one thing a lot of people don't realize is the parking that's right there, that's actually on City Rite Way. And so that's one of the things we need to be kept correcting with that one. Some of the parking on the ones that did burn is on City Rite Way. So we need to get everybody the same amount paid, make certain, because where exactly is that one starting and end? Because if we go and have a parking requirement, it needs to be on their property, this is private property.
Oh, God, and, and that's what I was, that's what I was saying about with BV CV, the, the plan that I saw that they didn't put out. I mean, that was all incorporated and it was on their property. And of course, they had the one thing where it was behind, you know, the, behind the apartment complexes. But that's also going to take a lot of land, it seems like to me, you know, to make.
One of the things already in here, too, is piggybacking on those, the saltwater apartments. Now, that was a unfounded federal mandate that City Rite Way had to be put under, and so that was, that was some of that was incorporated because what the City Rite Way put under that, it was a unfounded federal mandate.
But is, is there any developments that have incorporated all of this?
Yes, there, there are several developments in, just, I'm from Birmingham, so there's going to be. Now, I can't say that 100% these developments that I've seen in the Birmingham area meet all of these requirements, that, but just from a, just visually looking at them, there are many that do meet. Of those that have been developed in the last 10 or 15 years, meet the majority of these requirements. Only a few of these requirements are going to truly impact cost, and that's probably going to be in the, the architecture, the architectural standards requiring the, the building articulation, but most contemporary apartment developments already do that. They, so this is just preventing those where they're trying to get, you know, reduce their costs down to the bare minimum and doing just substandard multifamily development. Most contemporary multifamily development includes a lot of those architectural standards, maybe not 100% of them do. They're going to be very different, there are going to be big variations between things that you see in, in, in a, in a downtown environment versus a suburban environment, but in terms of the suburban multifamily development, you start, you're going to see most of the architectural standards that are in this are being met in contemporary suburban apartment development.
So is that including the green spaces in the, when you say architectural, to me, that's the building itself, but is that the green spaces? Is that the parking? Is that the, you know, all, everything that you had brought up?
Not 100%. Some of those are going to be, the open space, you'll see that in those, you'll see the open space provided to about that same extent in those contemporary developments. However, some of it, or, or some of those developments, the open space is just open space. It's yard area, it's, you know, setbacks, it's not, it's not designed specifically for any particular use, so that the residents of those developments don't actually have any recreational space on those. Some of them do, some of them don't, but they meet the open space requirement. There will be a little extra cost in actually improving it for it to be used for pickleball or, or, or whatever, what have you, putting a gazebo in. But, you know, plenty of these name, but plenty of these developments, not just contemporary ones, but for many years incorporate amenities, clubhouses and pools and, and things of that nature. And those are acceptable, you know, those meet these requirements. So that's not, I wouldn't say that that's a, an added cost compared to what you see traditionally in most mid-range to above multifamily development. You're not going to see it in the very low end.
My main thing is I just think that we're, we're, we're wanting castles for, for maybe a regular, I, I just, I just think it's going completely overboard for being able to get multifamily and allowing, you know, allowing all per capita people could use them, that's all, that's my thing. I mean, it's, it's beautiful, yes, I agree, but I just don't think it fits here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. I'll see y'all.
Is it okay if I put my papers down, or do you want me to close the last time to protect it? Okay. So Dr. Jerry Simmons, 141 North Chestnut Street. Disclaimer, I, out of the rental business, I don't operate any more rentals, have no desire, I won't be buying apartments. So I'm just a citizen in a single-family home, looking at this rationally. And as my eyes glazed over, as we went from a change last month withdrawn to change the height, which of course you can't do for the mill, and I'll explain that in a minute, we went to nine pages, it became apparent to me that basically what we've got is a boilerplate taken from KPS files, and some of it fits Prattville, and some of it fits about as well as a sock on a rooster. So you're being fed all of this information. The standards are embedded with overly minute details, many of them are not even exclusive to R4. So why put this in an R4 ordinance? You're going to have to repeat it for other districts. They should be incorporated. I think it's unfair to give you just R4 and say, I want your vote on just R4. You need to be looking comprehensively at all of the plans for all of the amendments for all of the districts. If you only look at R4, you might not realize that multifamily doesn't just apply to R4. It applies to RD1 and T2 mobile homes. So you might not even be aware of that if you didn't look comprehensively. So I urge you to look at all of it. The reason you want to look at it comprehensively, you want to make sure that the changes mesh and are congruent, and you pick up any conflicts that may be between the districts. The reason, by the way, that you're being fed R, R4 first was that there's a moratorium. Well, the moratorium ends on April 30th, unless it's extended. There's no hurry, because as I'll explain, based on the Supreme Court decisions, giving the mill downtown a permit does not grandfather them. So according to the Supreme Court, numerous decisions, I've given Mr. Stevens some of the Attorney General opinions, you do not get grandfathered unless you've constructed the apartments. You can't construct the downtown apartments until FEMA approves the levy. So there's no urgency. The city council should not codify this set of requirements because the mill could never meet these requirements. So I, I, for that reason, some of the standards, by the way, are, and by the way, if you want any of the court decisions or the AG opinions, let me know, I'll send them to you. Some of them I find arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. They have to have a reasonable relationship to safety, health, and welfare of the public. If you can't prove that, the judge is likely to say out. So I'll give you some examples. Minimum pitch, 5 to 12. 40-foot maximum roof length. A wall articulated and fenestrated to provide physical interest. To who? More than one material on the subject. No parking between the building and the street. No building can be surrounded by parking. You see, some of these things may be possible if you lived in a historic district that already had established guidelines, but this isn't going to fly for a city public-wide. The other things don't make sense, as councilman Chambers picked up, I wouldn't want to be the one telling my spouse that, I know we live in a one-bedroom, but you can only park half your car. The other one that I, I chuckled at is one visitor spot for four, four units. I can see a real mess there, and folks parking in everybody else's spots and, or out on the street, whatever. So there's some things that clean up, and there's some things that are just totally unreasonable. 280 cubic feet of storage per unit, a child's playground. Two-hundred-and-eighty cubic feet of storage per unit, a child's playground, if there's forty units and it must be two-thousand square feet, there's a liability I think some owners of apartments would love to take on. A traffic study for a hundred units. I, I, I really gotta chuckle because we've stood here as citizens as a, a complexes of two-hundred to three-hundred subdivisions, and we've begged for traffic studies only to fall on deaf ears, but now we're gonna go ahead and do one for a hundred units. And I'm not objecting to it, all I'm saying is, I wanna see this thing done comprehensively, and if they're required to have a traffic study, I want a McQueen Smith subdivision to have that same traffic study. The comp plan, let's, let, let me read just a bit about what it says. It says that, given the findings, the community will deal with continued significant pressure to accommodate multifamily development. As explained in the study, this is due to a large number of households and a type of income level that tends for rental in, housing, including young singles, childless couples, widowers, retirees, and military. So they're telling you that there's a demand. When I look at this, and by the way, I like apartments that look aesthetic, I want them to be well-built, so it's not that I disagree, I think there should be a reasonable proportion of multifamily as compared to single-family, and part of that is, that's what's driving all of, all of this. So I want that too, but I perceive a clear message, a subtle message, in this detailed set of plans, if you pass this or recommend this. And the message is, if you wanna come build apartments, you may find it's not cost-effective to build here in Prattville. That's the subtle message, if you were to pass what you've got in front of you. So I request that you table any action, that you wait for the reasons I've given. I suggest that you take time and look comprehensively at all of the changes that Mr. Stevens is going to present from the city, so you can make sure that they're fair, and that they're reasonable, and that they're com- compatible. And then the final reason I think you need to table all of this is, I, maybe I missed it, I could not find any published, uh, uh, newspaper, in the local newspaper of this hearing, um, for today's meeting, which is required, you know, under state law. So, um, man, maybe, uh, maybe there's some paper that I've missed, but I've checked the progress, and I've checked the advertiser, and it, it isn't in either of them for any of those days. So I know I covered a lot, and I'm not saying I disagree with a bunch, and I'm not disagreeing that we need to move in this direction. I just think that this plan is a bit much for Prattville, and it's basically gonna render cost-prohibitiveness, which is gonna conflict with the very thing that your plan said. You have an increased demand for apartments, and so you need to react to that. That, that's, that's my point. And if any of you need the court cases and whatever, um, I don't wanna see the, what I don't wanna see is the city council act in a hurry and jeopardize the situation with the mill. So if they were to enact two stories, then only two of the four or five stories for the mill. If they enact this R4, then all of these things have to be met, which they can. And you have to keep in mind that T2 mobile and RD1 have to also follow, because they're multifamily. So, um, that, that's my, my point is, I would recommend you table it for all of those reasons.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Pearson on Zoom.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, I, I won't take very long, and I know it's been a long meeting, I've been there for, I guess about a night. Um, I echo the comments, uh, that have been made, you know, about, uh, how great these, these images look, and the, the desire to build high-quality products, uh, is fantastic, you know, and I think that with back some of our renters we've, we've put forth, um, I think architecturally, um, we're gonna meet most of them, you know, I, I think our intent and the beauty of a capital, uh, capitalistic approach like this, we're gonna build something that we want tenants to wanna be a part of, and I would wanna draw, attract tenants, and I think, uh, the next generation of renters and people that have this type would be value in these same things that are part of this plan. So I, I don't disagree with the direction that's trying to be accomplished. Uh, I do know far and fast, uh, this would increase comps substantially, uh, and the only way to offset some of those costs is through rent. And so if, if we're looking at this, and the developer that we're working with, uh, to sell this to, looks at this and has to modify the cost accordingly, rents are gonna have to increase, uh, can Prattville support those higher rents? Would we have a situation where we have a half-occupied space on our hands, and, and all the problems that that would, um, create? You know, I think those are all things to consider. Um, but, you know, architecturally, you know, different, uh, finishes, all the things are great, uh, and I think they're aligned with the renters' loose submitted with other projects, our developers, the down, and I think you could deliver a high-quality sought-after product without this extent, uh, of requirements, as, as officers, I alluded to, but I, I know those, those comments of that, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, I deserve to have a call, it's like, and, uh, call, well, the, the, the beginning is closed, will you mind reading your resolution in some, right there, resolution, text amendment, multifamily, um-
Resolution, text amendment, multifamily developments, Prattville zoning ordinance, whereas the Prattville Planning Commission may formulate and recommend changes to the zoning ordinance of Prattville, Alabama, whereas the planning commission has determined that the multifamily development regulation should be revised and updated, and whereas the planning commission has formulated an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and where at the public hearing on, a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance was, the properly analyzed and conducted by the Prattville Planning Commission on March 10th, 2021. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends that Prattville City Council amend zoning ordinance, Article 6, Section 67, as detailed in statute. Be it further resolved that the disresolution of policy adoption be transmitted by the Secretary of Planning Commission to the Prattville City Council, approved as the 18th day of March 21st. So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Um, discussion number one, the advertised as conducted by the planning commission, I guess that's fifteen and sixteen, uh, Scott, was it advertised, uh?
I was just checking the ad we sent to the, to the advertisement, it was sent on 33 to run on 36, I don't have a newspaper in front of me, I was, you know, we got the proof back from them, but like I said, I don't have a paper in front of me.
Okay. Do you have the paper, or?
I have the paper in front of me, including the second one and the advertisers, and, uh, unfortunately, it didn't run.
Okay. So it did not run. What is the legal position on that, Richard Scott?
Uh, I, I would like to go check that, of course, um, you can, I would say, go ahead and still discuss what you want to take today. We can, if you take action and it was not advertised, we would put it on the next agenda, or if you feel more comfortable pushing it to the next agenda, we can re-advertise something.
Not being advertised. We're trying to make it work.
Absolutely, it, it needs to be advertised, I was, I was gonna chuckle now, but that's how I was just gonna, you know, but with the, like we do every, every other advertise, when we send to their, their legal department, they send the proof back, so we got all that, but, uh, that's how I was trying to have a paper in front of me.
You know, I don't know, again, I saw, and I don't know if anybody's actually gotten to, you know, to sort of the paper away when it's sewn to a, to a yard. Different medias, but it is the one. All right, well, let's discuss it, um, we will get to that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Scott?
Oh.
So I'm just curious, uh, do you happen to have the pictures from the 2040 plan that show what, what everybody that, that participated said visually, what they liked versus what they say they disliked? And my next question would be, are we following along in, in that, with, with this, this new plan?
Yes, sir, let me, give me just a moment to, to get the display working again. There, there are the, uh, I mean, maybe you should let Jason explain those, but they, these are the pictures I've shown during the last week's-
Uh, and those are all considered the apartments?
Uh, no, no, those are not all considered the apartments. Considered ones on the left are multifamily or very potentially townhomes, and those on the top of the right are multifamily, some of the others are, just showing like lower right is trees and sidewalks and, and grass.
Okay, so how does that, I mean, are we kinda working toward that, you know, as far as what we want, as far as future multifamily, you know, uh, buildings? Because that looks a little different than what I'm reading in some of this, so that's kinda why I was kinda curious where we're going in that regard.
Uh, I, I think the proposed guidelines, you could probably, you know, not give a cycle underneath, it's probably very similar. Now, the guidelines allow a lot of flexibility and creativity from the, from the design.
Do you have the one that says this line? Cause the one I see that says this line looks a little bit more like what, right there, the middle bottom, that's kinda what it sounds like we're trying to do right now? Well, you have to correct me on that, but that's kinda where I'm, I'm, the people spoke, and they're saying they don't really care for that, that style, that look, versus what we had, you know, where they should, that first picture, those, those look totally different to me. I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but should we want, should we not want those, uh, that, you know, that type of building, what everybody's requesting, should we not have that moving forward?
Well, that one does have the landscaping along the foundation, uh, it's hard to tell how the, I mean, the parking lot's right in front of the building, I don't, I don't know how to sort it out to the rest of the lot. Uh, the roof lines may or may not meet the articulations of the apartments, the, the windows don't seem to be inset or, or outset, so, uh-
Well, one of the things I see is the, I mean, how many stories there are.
Uh, yes, sir, and that's, that, that's certainly over discussion, that currently is not being proposed to change, so that, that's certainly something the planning commission can, can recommend or, or tell me to change, we, we just left that how it was.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
The, um, is that all one building material, or how many, ten percent of? Well, um, I think Dr. Simmons also mentioned arbitrary, um, provisions, provisions?
Could be.
Yes, thank you. This might say it again. Uh, I don't know, I, I know what we're wanting to do, and I get what we're wanting to do, but, um, can we?
Yeah, architectural, the design standards are used in designing, zoning laws throughout the state and throughout the country, and I think it's, in requiring certain looks and, and materials and, and design, I think is, is a very common standard, if you're throughout the state and throughout the nation.
And just, and, and parking on other communities, that when you come into it, and there's some areas in Auburn and other like that, change some of the direction they're going, uh, and you build apartments, would, would that be a major constraint? I know owners, I mean, I've looked at old office complexes I own, and all I see is parking lot, now if there were regulations that would've been different at the time in the eighties, you know, we would've built that building differently, and we would, yeah, I, I would've just had to build what we, what was, what we could, and would've done it the way we could. If we do need to think about this and look at it and make sure that we are correct on the advertising of this, um, do we need to hold this for the next meeting and continue discussing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm horrified by that, although I would encourage you to, to further discussion, so if we need like changes, we'll get it done, so.
Um, if legally, I know it's a restraint on the people that might come in here, but there's some common sense, like, I don't, there were somebody gonna build a, out, a building apartment complex with what, T11, and, uh, but if you act, uh, and were saying, okay, you can't use T11 on the, the, the boards, I don't think that's too much of a restraint, because they're not calling out what they're doing. And you can also say, and, I don't know how often they use the metal on the back, you know, the all, the, the, everything has to go with the site. And maybe that's not that much of a restraint on that part. The other part being that the parking lot, I, I would like to, and again, more on other communities, you wouldn't even know that, if you drive down some areas in other communities, you wouldn't even know Walmart was there, instead of like, I don't Walmart, where, where it's, you know it's there, you have, really have, you know, it's hidden behind the bushes, and it looks good, and you get there, and they built it, and it's thriving, and they're, they're, the business is doing great. But you know, it just doesn't, you know, come out and you jump back when you're on the lot.
And I think having certain standards you have to meet, and everybody wants to improve their standards, that's what we all want to do in anything. Um, but you know, like, some of the things you mentioned, like the dumpster parking and the lighting, you know, that's just kinda like common sense, what people would have. And I also noticed in the 2040 plan, you know, we said, there's all different kinds of people that live in apartments, you know, there's older people, younger people, people without children, people with children. You want to have a diverse enough apartment mix that you attract those people, you know, that aren't just newly into their own housing, which is, would, used to be typical apartment dwellers, they're not anymore, and they expect more. And I think having standards like this, they're obviously built other places, we've seen them, we saw the pictures. Somebody gets this, why don't you?
And, and I, I get open spaces, but if they put a basketball goal, and, and also they're playing basketball, two o'clock in the morning, waking up and putting stuff, you know, who, who's gonna regulate that? And, and we, we have, I, I understand we want to have recreational areas, but I'm not positive that, yeah, we need to have green spaces and open spaces, but to say, um, kids will come in here with thirty-eight kids instead of forty, so they don't have to put a playground at it, and in playgrounds, if somebody gets hurt, well, we might've put one in for what the city requires, and, would, would be liable for something, because they wanna have one anyway. I don't know. Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I, if, if somebody is working on grandma Tuesday and-
Yeah, if I might, well, if somebody is waking up grandma two days, and the city can't come and take action there, now, one of the things, piggybacking off of that, but one of the things I see on here that I'm not crazy about is, um, page five, about half page, couple minutes there. Page three, page three, about halfway down to E, letter E, uh, votes and recreational buildings may not be kept on the premises, I, I'm having a struggle with that. Now, I'm very much accepting, I think it's a part of our responsibility, the municipality and planning commission, everything, to help with the quality of life, which, that outdoors affects both mental and physical health, and it's both a part of our, our charge is to watch out for the mental and physical health of our, our citizens, but that, somewhere down the line, whether it's today or later on, I might want to make a motion and remove that. Uh, the parking, uh, I'm not crazy about all of the parking, uh, sometimes in the spirit of compromise, you've got to try to do something, slide over to page two, um, parking driveways, uh, I, 1.5 spaces per one bedroom unit, you know, I, I can almost go there, but then as you move down, two spaces per unit of two and three bedrooms, in my mind, that'd all be two spaces per unit of, of two bedrooms, and next week, it's three spaces, uh, for, for three bedrooms, I can, I would like to see us have some discussions on that, and it does sound like the, the potential of it not being properly advertised, we do need to hold this, but the other question I had on top of that, with the timeline, with the moratorium and everything else, that we need to send a message to the city council and say, "Plan commission need more time." So just a few other things I would bring up, but there are a lot of other things that do, that do come at the cost of building. Uh, life safety is so, so important, but the firewall of the mission, apartments number six grew recently, uh, two different age groups of apartments there, uh, one didn't have a firewall, the other one did, and FBI chief pretty much, that firewall, uh, did come into a big play, that, that, but then I think new ones now have to have.
It's race system.
Um, I'm not a big Springfield guy, but I believe that the ones that did burn, that had this Springfield, um, our guys, but I didn't put as much risk, there's been a lot of pledge damage, so there's a lot of things brought up through the years, probably because of situations happening, that need to be incorporated in here, and I mentioned earlier, there's some parking, uh, that were, that was allowed from one of the, in one of one parking section, for the, to, to utilize that as a parking requirement, and I think that's pretty wrong, so there are a lot of things, but, uh, I do appreciate it being brought to our attention by the advertising, I don't think what we're doing is pretty and, and probably true, but, uh, I do think we need to look at it closer, but I do think we need to send a message to the council as well.
All right, would we entertain another little sit-down and have a fraction, late session on the, um...
Oh, absolutely, like I said, I encourage you, any other, any feedback comments I've given today is very helpful, it's a good opportunity to incorporate the other changes that the planning commission has made on the site.
I will take this, this, this copy and this for myself.
And I will say, for the mayor, by the way, even if it were recommended today by planning commission, the moratorium would need to be extended regardless, so that was already in the works.
Mr. Mayor, this will, on the part of the votes, I, I personally, you know, I had places down there, Gulf Shores and Condes, and to say you can't have a vote at a beach is, I had to win my mind, like, okay.
Well, I, I want to hear our code of remorse for having tried to enforce that.
But that, I think that's more on the individual apartment complex in itself, we don't need to, I micromanage the apartment complexes, and I'm afraid that's what we're doing with some of these things, is we're micromanaging, and, um...
Well, if I, if I might ask, second one other question, is that should we ask a little guidance from the council, uh, Dr. Simmons brought up about looking at anything collectively? Do we want to find out, do the council, are they willing us to look at this individually like this, and, and then collectively before we send them something? I think I'd like to get a little bit of guidance from that, to, I think, I can ask it during the mayor's report, I think it'd be a lot better for it to be coming from the planning commission.
Yes, sir, and of course, the, the time is under the words to be looked at, uh, this was moved to the forefront because of the moratorium, um, it started in December, and it's currently under 330, so we shouldn't want to extend that any longer than necessary, so, uh, this might as well work. Uh, again, the, the plan the entire time has been to update the entire zone, and it's underway, the discussion has started on many other sections, but again, the reason this would come up to the planning commission early is because of the moratorium.
And for the sake of time, if we are going to move this, let's just have a time within the next two weeks, and you can say, and it depends, I would welcome the entire planning commission, if they want to...
Work session.
Have a work session, and we can either do it, I, I would, I like, I, Zinn has places, it's great that you're here with us on Zinn, but I would like to have a real work session where we can sit down and talk, and I like that, I like that.
Tim, can I make?
Yes.
One comment, um, when, when we first were presented this, and I think Scott at the top, backing up this, first thing I said is, be careful what you ask for, because you might get it.
Yes.
And, um, it depends, and I'm new to the community, so I'm speaking out of school towards the group, it, it, uh, there's no question that this is going to drive the apartment development in this community to a, a higher economical level, and, um, I think we have to be careful that we, we have a supply of rental product that meets all income levels and not around, you know, the, the fluency level of apartments, um, in, in markets, it's really gotten pretty expensive, expensive, um, we're talking $5,000, $100 in money in upper apartments, and, uh, certainly in the Atlanta market, maybe the Birmingham market, that's, and that's becoming more the norm than, than the lower income levels, unless an apartment is, is developed specifically for a lower income market, and my concern is, is that does this preclude us, uh, as a city, from encouraging more moderate, not necessarily low income, but more moderate income apartment communities? It's a, it's a hard question to answer, and I think that we have to, as a community, and it's difficult, because the, the question of it is, uh, what, what is it exactly that is driving for? But this, there's no question, as the developers, they all agree, this is going to make the cost higher, I don't think you can build this product without increasing price, which is going to equate to a, a market, applies for the parts that are in form and land, so it's all going to be driven by the, the economics of the development, and, um, I'm concerned this is going to preclude some, sort of, we might want it to be developed on a, an attractive economical way, you know, fulfilling.
Can I ask for something with a work session? Can you get an average number of apartments that are currently in Prattville? What the average occupancy, what the average rent, you know, do we have, what do we have in the way of low income apartments, oh, it numbers, to see where we are?
I mean, what's the average cost per unit right now as you're building a apartment? Is, I would, with that, just a regular apartment?
Perhaps they could, I, I haven't built apartments in a while, so I don't have those, I don't have that number.
Year one, I, what, we, we, when we say it's $100,000 to build one unit?
Yeah.
But, but should that even be a true part of the question?
Just that, I'm asking a question, I just want to know.
But should it be a part of your question? I mean, are we going to say, okay, um, I'm looking really hard at the, at the number of parking spots, okay, and they come back, oh, we go up on this, this is going to cost an extra $50, because of the extra parking, we're asking the developers with homes, those subdivisions, give us more green space, give us this, you know, and, and, you know, and I heard a lot, and, oh, I guess one other, I'm calling a point, at one point in time here in Prattville, we built a subdivision, we built a subdivision, we had sidewalks on both sides, and then all of a sudden, developers go, oh, no, we, that's too expensive, we're not going to do it, so now we only have sidewalks on one side, and then a lot of them started building outside the corporate limits, or in another community somewhere, they don't have to build sidewalks, or they don't have the curves, and, and then we have a lot of people that moved over here because they like the curves and the sidewalks and those identities, that, you know, so I mean, we're, I don't know that we need to be putting a sticker prize on what we're looking at, the fire safety, uh, if I, not, not in the fire department at all, but I bet you if you were to go in and go and look at when you're building these apartments, the fire safety side of it, that's not, the cost could probably be a lot more than the two and three different roofs, as someone told me, now, and no place in my opinion, but again, the fire safety is proven itself to me, so I mean, uh, the storm guard, where we had no control over that, that's an unfunded mandate, and you got to have homes, and that is going to cause up, now, I'm going to give you one quick example, the International Building Code, there was a entity that was looking at two different locations, one here in Prattville, one in Montgomery, they loved the location up here better, they had already gone over and talked to the, uh, Montgomery area one, they saw this one, they came back, well, in between there, both entities, um, Montgomery Prattville adopted the, the next round of international building codes, and when they saw ours, they said, oh, that's going to cost us, that's the, you know, I'm talking about, I'm missing the names, I think it was over $300,000 additional in cost, and they said, well, you don't, we don't go back to Montgomery, they went back to Montgomery, they found out that they had passed the same thing, and even though they had gone to them before, they said, well, you didn't fill out, you're not being bothered yet, so then they came back to us, and that has nothing to do with, that was a commercial, you know, nothing to do with, um, residential, whether it's apartments or not, now, another thing I hear from a lot of builders is that, uh, I think it's very important, they have to cut, uh, remember to block out all the passages, that we have cheap ones, they do the vacuum test, or whatever, um...
That's building code.
Building code, yeah, they have to do a vacuum test, to make certain additional air leaks in there.
Energy efficient code, and that's throughout the state.
Okay, well, a lot of folks don't like, I hear a lot of complaints from builders on that, but look at the, the utility deals, how they have come down, so, there's a lot of things that have gone, gotten driven, prices up, but I, I don't think that we need to be looking at the price of the unit when we start making these decisions, you know?
Yeah. I'm just curious what it, what it all is going, now that, um, I want to make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting?
The board, the board, what's the board?
Okay, a motion to postpone?
Postpone is the official word, I think. Make a motion to postpone to the next meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
In all favor, right hand, again, um, moving forward because, you know...
Well, can I add one more comment here, uh, again, what, what is the stance from the, the commission here about reaching out to the council, about the moratorium, and also, they have this understanding, whether when you look at this, is it a single unit or the various different portions of that?
I, I, you know, right now, we're just looking at this, and if they would feel better in keep, in keeping the moratorium, I don't have a problem, but I think we could probably resolve this in the next months, um, and, now, are we ready to do, to earn zoning along with it? I don't believe we can, we won't tackle this one, and, and, what do you want us to do?
Well, I'd like you to, uh, send a letter to the council, and, and, and ask their opinion, or maybe go through Scott Stevens, there you see Phil, and, uh, from what I'm picking up on, I, there's no way, when we get through here, we can get it to the council and them voting on something within that time, for sure, but they, they need to, yeah, officially.
Do you have a problem drafting something, you know, with me or with the council?
Uh, I can draft anything, I ask, I need, I need to know what that message is.
I'm waiting for, um, I don't have extended.
Well, the moratorium, uh, even if the planning commission decided to recommend the zoning change, tax change to the highest, the moratorium would absolutely have to be extended, there was not enough time to, to implement the zoning, so, the moratorium will be extended, or will need to be extended, if that's the question, of course, uh, anyway, but, um, it'll need to, if, if this is postponed further, it'll just need to be postponed, the moratorium will need to be extended.
We will let them know that we're not quite ready with, um, the full accordance of, of the taxes.
Right, and I'll, I'll transmit that to the council, of course, um, but I, I think part of the mayor's question is, does the council want to wait on the entire zone elements to be written, which may be a couple months, couple, three months away, uh, and again, depends, you know, if, if you get some depth and they get, it gets postponed, it could be a lot, so.
And if I might, some of the rationale for some of that, because there are, uh, and best groups of partners at Prattville, who I think deserve to know what people might be coming their way or not.
Absolutely, we can look at some, all right, uh, all in favor of moving it back? Since I wrote it right here, all right, now, the product Prattville 2040 adoption, um, we want to go forward with this, I guess we have to.
You, you don't actually have to, but again, it's on the agenda for tonight.
It is on the agenda, and does everybody want to continue? Is there anyone that has to, um, well, that way, I'm good from the wall over, um...
I would like to make a motion to postpone until we hear more from the council and make a decision on this.
We're probably, okay, I'm probably, okay, now, you want to postpone probably Prattville for the, well, that family part?
No, I want you to...
What do you want to postpone for Prattville, please, back?
I want to...
Okay, is that a form of a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for that? All right, thank you. There's a motion to postpone the product Prattville adoption, uh, to a later time, all in favor, right hand, all right, it looks like it has moved back. Scott, do you have anything you want to add at this time?
Uh, no, sir, like, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll work on the dates of a work session to further talk about all four, and I'll get that sent out to the commission, and of course, we'll publish that when it gets sent.
All right, I'll be... I'll be right back.